I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam President, I move to review the budget with all the amendments, one additional certified and classified personnel actually item DAS through.
Is there a second? All right. Second decision. All in favor, please raise your hand. I now announce that the hearing for the 2016-2017 budget is open for discussion. Any comments?
I'd just say, I think it looks better than what we were expecting in six months. I'm encouraged.
Madam President, I move to the budget hearing for the 2016-2017 budget be closed.
I have second. Is there a motion to be separated from the first budget? Is there a motion to approve the budget?
First you need to go on this floor.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. Um, is there a motion to approve the budget? Several. Second? Um, just one paper. Ready for discussion?
I have a group discussion. Did we just open that budget hearing to hear from anyone, or was that just public comment? I never heard any, I guess I never heard any opening of a budget from public comment. I heard open for discussion. I don't know if there's anybody out there who had any comments or not. Do you have any registration?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a, just a comment.
I would ask though, is there anyone who wanted to comment on this? Does it? Any other comments on the motion to approve the budget? All in favor of approving the budget for the 2016-2017 budget? At this point I would like to recognize any clear, clear ideas in the remarks?
I have the easy job. My name is Roger Stain, and I am the Associate Principal for the School of Arts and Communications. And I'm very fortunate to have some very talented people that are onboard with us, or that used to be onboard with us, but are helping us get through a bit of a transition. So, basically, I want to introduce Karen Burden. And Karen, if I get this wrong, that's thirty-nine years in the business. Is that correct? Forty, I see. But really fantastic, and she's really helping us a lot, and I'll get to that in a moment. I want to introduce Ms. Robin Hilt, who is also deeply involved in our theater department, and she is one of the coordinators for FCC LA. And finally, I want to introduce Ms. Elizabeth Maldonado. I'm going to let them talk about a little bit of what's going on. Basically, we have a young professional who is five years in the business. And she is going to take over for our culinary arts department under the guidance of Karen, who has agreed to help us out with a little bit of mentoring and getting her into the flow of things and how things are run and done in a professional kitchen. So, without any further ado, I'm going to let them take over, and they're going to introduce the students and talk about their success this summer. So, there you have it.
Well, the students this summer competed in the Nationals in San Diego, California, so it took five students. Peola Rodriguez is our new district president for FCC LA, so that means that she is, we have fourteen chapters in our district, and so she'll be the president for that large organization. And she was there this summer for training to take over that position. Taylor Tindall did life event planning, and she received a Silver at State and also a Silver at Nationals. And Taylor, if you'd like to speak a little bit about?
Um, yeah. Overall, my experience with FCC LA has been absolutely amazing. And I was ecstatic that I was able to get to the national level once again, because that would be two years running for me. And that was absolutely amazing for me, because that was my goal, is I wanted to go out as a senior year on something big. And getting to a national level in a competition was really big. San Diego was fabulous, it was beautiful, it was cool, a little humid, but I'm used to humidity. But it was nice to be able to, when I finally got up and I got to present, and tell them why I was there, for my life event planning, over building bridges. That was my life event planning, that I helped get that all organized and put out and done for. And when I actually got there and I found out that I got first silver for my district, that's the Midwest, first silver for that. There was only one person in my category that got gold, so only one person beat me. That was absolutely amazing to know, and it's really good that that can also go on a college application saying, hey, I've done this, I know how to run a group, I know how to keep things organized. I can build bridges between your community and your schooling, I can socialize with people, I can let all those people know what's going on. It was absolutely amazing, and it's really nice to be able to talk about that and tell people, it's like, oh hey, I'm a smart person. Another thing that comes through with the culinary department was Pro Start was another thing that I got to do with my fabulous partner here. She helped me out, and well, we didn't get to go to Nationals on that level, but at the Kansas State Invitational, we each got silver for second place, and we got over twenty-one grand of Peace and Scholarships money, so that was also an amazing thing as well. I know that she plans to follow through with it continuously, but I think she's having a hard time finding a group, but I'm pretty sure she'll be able to find some. Because she helped pull me in at, well, close to the last minute to kind of help build up the rest of the group. So it was very nice.
And then our culinary team consisted of Gustavo Valdispino, and he's a funded community college here. And I, he was in contact with me, and I've lost contact with him now. Tanya is still in Mexico, she hasn't returned back from Mexico yet. And Rosalva was at Simran on her way over here, a little hesitant, I don't know, so. But out of fourteen schools in our district, or in our central region of FCC LA, once you get to national, we're divided into different regions. We have fourteen schools in our region, in our region. And the culinary team took second place in that event, and so it's very proud of what, you know, they accomplished. And also the culinary team, three of those students were the same students that were on the Pro Start team for our Pro Start competition that we did this last year. It's, do you want to say anything about the Pro Start competition?
Um, it was a lot of stress, I can tell you that. Honestly, it was really fun, I had a great time, it was a new experience, like learning to take leadership, you learn leadership skills, you learn to use. You just learned a lot, like, I learned a lot.
Pretty much how to work in a competitive culinary environment. It's very strict down to the grater, and trust me, you will get chopped out of the competition if you do not know what you're doing. TV show reference.
Bill, do you want to talk about your experience with the leadership training?
Oh, yeah. Well, I've learned that leader, being a leader is hard. I've known that for a long time, but training at San Diego was very intense. The pressure definitely was on my shoulders after that, because you realize that your district, which I have about, maybe thirteen schools that I, that I'm in charge of. And, I mean, it's, it's a lot for me. And so it was definitely hard trying to realize, like, I have to plan events and go through, like, my advisors. So I can't just do things how I want it, you know, I have to respect my elders and go through them. So that was hard for me, because I like doing things how I want them. But there's, like, parliamentary procedure that I still have to learn, and other little details that we learned at training that was very intense. But it was definitely a fun experience, I got to meet people from, like, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands. I met, I love New York, and I met three people from New York. So I think FCC LA definitely teaches anybody how to grow into a better leader. And it's, anything, it relates to anything with the family, so it's open to everybody, whether you're in the culinary area, interested in fashion, or you're interested in family education, early childhood, it's really available for anybody to join, and we welcome everybody. And it's definitely been a great life experience for me to be in it.
I'd also like to send our appreciation to the board for supporting our students financially to attend a national convention, because they are expensive, and we appreciate all of the financial support and just the moral support that you give our students for that.
I have really enjoyed getting to work with Karen for the last two years. I'm the new fashion and interior design teacher, this will be my third year here teaching that, here at Garden City High School. I taught one year before as an English teacher. She's been an amazing mentor, and I can't express how happy I am to be standing up here.
And Elizabeth, could I just tell you a little bit about yourself?
Don't let me, you guys will forget about me. Like, my, my name is Elizabeth. I graduated here, I'm a class of two thousand and ten. I had classes with Ms. Burden, so she's one of my teachers. My buff project, she was my mentor as well. So after high school, I kind of had no idea where I was going to head into. I knew I loved this, is what I was going to do, this is what I was always doing at home. And then my dad basically was like, why are you overthinking this? Go to culinary school. Like, what are you, what are you doing? So I said, okay, so I, I looked up the schools around Kansas area, and Denver, and Kansas City. Well, my parents prefer to ship me out to California. They preferred having me closer to family. It was a, it's, I went to the ship technology in Clovis, California. It's a small technical school, and it has a fifteen-month program for culinary arts. They prefer shipping me over there, because I had family. You're eighteen years old, you know, you're eighteen years old moving to a big city, and parents don't have eyes on you. So if I was to go to Kansas City, my parents didn't have eyes on me there. Denver, my parents didn't have eyes, in California they did, even if it was a twenty-four-hour drive, from a seven-hour drive. Well, I graduated in two thousand and twelve. I started, basically, as soon as I started school, I started getting into, you know, I started working as a dietitian aide, and then I moved on from there, just to different jobs. I was holding, like, four different jobs all at one time, going to school, and just, one job after another, I didn't want to turn anything down, because everybody just kind of saw my potential, and I just kind of wanted to take all jobs as they were coming to me. Felt overwhelmed, so then I ended up just sticking with one. I ended up moving back here to Garden in two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and twelve. About a couple, like, maybe half a year after graduating college. And I started, I gave a call to the casino, and I asked them, and Dodge, and I asked them if they hired twenty-one and under, because I wasn't twenty-one yet. So they said they did for the kitchen, so I said, great, you know, you guys have an opening. And he said, I'll, I'll call you back and see what we can do for you. As soon as I moved back home, like, three days later, I got a call from the casino. So I was, like, very blessed. I went through the whole process, getting to the casino. Within the matter of six months, I started, they promoted me up to kitchen supervisor. So then I, here I am dealing, I'm, I'm not even twenty-one years old yet, and I'm, like, running a kitchen. So that's something that was just, like, I just, I just feel like I'm good at. And then I started, I became a mother about two years later, so I have a one-year-old daughter. Let's see. Then I got a call from a woman that I worked for in the casino, and she was opening up a restaurant. She asked me if I would help her out. I started off as assistant manager, and two months after the store opened, she promoted me up to general manager. So then I had, it was basically the owner, me, and then everybody else running the entire kitchen. I don't know if you guys have heard of the restaurant Billyson's Barbecue in Dodge City? I ran that, I literally stopped working there a couple of weeks ago. For the past year, you know, I've, I've been there. Let's see, so I've had five years in this industry, and I'm really looking forward of being here and learning a lot from everybody, especially Ms. Burden. And I'm so happy, you know, I'm so happy that she's here helping me out, if not, I probably wouldn't know what I would be doing. Teaching-wise, you know, curricular stuff, but everything else, I think I could, I can, I am built to do this, and just trying to learn how to do lesson plans and, and all those things is, it's a, it's a challenge, and it's something completely new that I need to learn, so that's it, I guess.
We are really glad that she quit the barbecue, also. We were not just going to take anybody into this position, and the fact that she had Karen as a mentor, both before and currently, was, you know, we can, we thought, we can do a T2T or a transition to teaching or something to get her in there and, and get that going. So we're all happy to have Elizabeth, and just please welcome her, and.
I'm only twenty-four years old, so I'm, I'm pretty, I, I get confused still of a student. So, with the first days, when I came in, everybody just kind of passed me, didn't even know who I was or anything. Nope, I'm just, I'm just a professional, like, student, I guess, coming in, and so, yeah, I'm really excited. I'm, like, super excited that she's here. If not, I don't know what I'd be doing. So, thank you all for listening to my story.
I'd also like to mention that, just this week, we got notification again that we're in the top one hundred, and so I need schools in the United States culinary programs. So we'll be sending in the information that we have accomplished this last school year to see if we get selected for the top fifty again this year. So I'm really excited.
And I have a lot, I have a lot to cover, I mean, she's done amazing, and, and it's just like, I have a lot of shoes to fill in, so it's going to take a while, but be with me, guys.
At this point, the jury has gone. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move to the approval of the consent agenda, on item F one through five.
Second. Sorry, your special. All in favor, please raise your hand. Educators have the opportunity to attend a model school conference in Florida. And we're going to take a moment and introduce ourselves and state what school we teach at or work at. I'm Tracy Wyker, I'm principal of Victor and Alice.
Shay the Puff, Bernadine S.
Melinda Stewart, Jenny Wilson.
Becca Bedfield, sixth, Becca Bedfield, oh my gosh. Becca Burnpin, sixth grade, Bernadine S.
Laura Walsh.
Charles Stones, intermediate center.
Rachel Chapman. Charles Stones.
Amy Gole, first grade, Jenny Wilson.
Ashley Jordan, I teach kindergarten at Jenny Wilson.
Monica Diaz, I'm a literacy coach at Victor and Alice Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Janet Cook, I teach in the Health and Trade Academy of High School.
Jean Perkins, I'm also in Health and Trade of High School.
Jane Schneider, I'm also in Health and Trade of High School.
Ryan Ming, Health and Trade of High School.
Karen Merle. I'm going to have to think about where I'm at. Jenny Barker Elementary, and Bernadine S.
Kristy Bottson, I am the principal at Edith Charman Elementary.
Katie Hawn, I teach sixth grade communications. Charles Stokes.
Maury Grant, second grade, Edith Charman.
Heather Mitchell, science, Edith Charman.
Candice Walz, I teach art at Victor and Alice and Edith Charman.
All right, tonight we are going to share some teaching strategies, culture, and mindset growth that create learners, not students, that expect on-demand twenty-four-hour research that needs to be flexible and interactive.
Okay, you all thought I was excited about learning and kids and stuff before. Now that you've allowed me to attend model schools, look out. I am pumped more than I usually am. So, that takes us to the next slide. Culture trumps strategy. Those of you that know me, I'm all about the culture of a building, and it trumps everything, because once you get them there, and you're happy, and they're willing to learn, you can get them anything you need to give them. But first, we have to understand why we need to change, so we know what to change. And they did an excellent job of showing us where, how the world is changing. Take, for instance, Kodak. What happened to Kodak? Our cellphones came along. Sears, Sears had an innovative person that said, oh, we should go online, put our products online. No, no, our catalog is so good, let's use that. Well, we know what happened there, and then later, years later, everybody's online. So innovation, it's not an event, it's a culture. Okay? And how are we going to respond to that? Well, we've started, we've started right here. We've got, we've had our mission and our vision, we're leaning towards that, but we're taking a focus on culture this year. So, how do we start with culture? It starts with you all. So we're going to let you all know just how important we think you are and what a great job you've done. So if everybody could stand up, please. Here, Lady Anna, you're going to be moving around a little bit, so scoot your chairs back. Yeah. And we need to let each other know that everybody in here, you are great. All right? So when the music starts, you're going to go around, and you're going to get a high-five to people and tell them they are great. Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, stop. Everybody stop. Go around, when the music starts, give everybody a pat on the back and say, you rock. All right, come on back. Okay, so now that you all know that we think you rock, and we know our staffs rock, we're going to let the kids know that they rock. Who's next?
Um, we've talked, we learned a lot about growth mindset at model schools, and what growth mindset is, is we try to instill in the kids that it's okay to do, to try multiple attempts. So it's not about waking up one day and being successful, it's about all the attempts and the road to be successful. We also need our teachers to understand that they need to have not a fixed mindset, but a growth mindset. So not to be afraid to be innovative and try new things, afraid that maybe I don't have enough resources. Well, think past that, what can I do to provide some more resources for me or my classroom? Well, I might lose control of the students or my class if I try something new and different. Well, it's okay, you need to try something new and different and not be fixed as far as thinking, I need to teach to the textbook, and I need to teach to the test, but maybe I need more training, I don't know what to do. Well, instead, let's have a growth mindset and figure out what I need to do to be a better teacher. So it's all about not having a fixed mindset, but a growth mindset. And many of our staff and teachers are doing a book study on mindset by Carol Dweck. So this summer, Victor and Alice participated in the book study, and we were also able to learn about growth mindset at model schools. And there are several other schools that are going to participate this school year on, in a book study. So, I mean, that's the first step to a growth mindset, is what can I learn to be a better teacher and to not have a fixed mind about what I've been doing and how I can help students be successful.
Probably one of the most evidence-based things about what we've picked up at model schools is with this factor of positivity and motivation. Two of the fan favorites, I think, among everybody that went, were the speakers of Jimmy Casas and Dwight Carter. Dwight, who has been to our district to talk to us. And they're very into motivating students and getting everybody on the same page. And so one of the things that I know that we did as a SAC group, we studied the energy bus and talked about it, and got to go on a little trip on the bus, and then also had John Gordon come talk to the staff, getting everybody on the same page, everybody on a positive note to start the school year. And then one of the most exciting things that I think several are going to share is the hello parades that welcomed students when they came to school on the first day. Who doesn't like to feel like a rock star on the first day of school? And a lot of teachers and students rolled out the red carpet. I'm going to admit that I failed as a DJ, I'm an educator, not a DJ. I really wanted to do an awesome dance party, so I'm going to go to DJ school next summer. But it was very exciting for the students to get welcomed by red carpet and balloons and applause. So I don't know if anybody who rolled out red carpet wants to share a story, but some of the pics on the first day of school. Um, before we explain the summaries that we're responding to what we learned at model schools, I would like you to take a look at a desk that you might have had as a student and the desks that our Gen Z students have today.
Teacher does most of the work, that's kind of an old school way of teaching with a lecture. And then we're going into students' thinking, these are our college-bound students. And student works form our career, so to get kids to career and college readiness, we want them to move kind of up and over. So ideally, for the higher-level thinking and to produce this kind of students we want to be in our colleges and in our workplace, we need them in Quad D. So things like flexible seating are going to allow that, that they're going to be engaged and they're going to be ready to learn and prepared and teachers are also going to have more buy-in because they're going to see the growth in the learning as well. So we did a training based on, well, there's rigor relevance and student engagement. So we focused on student engagement.
And so that's going to be our focus throughout the year and that's what we're bringing back to our staff, is how to get those students and the teachers to that mindset of getting their learners engaged. And there's three components, or three indicators, there's active participation, learner involvement, and formative processes and tools. So the goal to that is to get the kids moving and engaged and on task and being self-learners instead of the teacher doing all the work, having the kids doing it and evaluating and reflecting on their process and on their performance. And so with that mindset, it's really kind of a project-based learning where you're guiding and they're doing the discovery and they're doing the learning. So with that.
So one of the things that we've really heard a lot about at Moll Schools was the concept of a makerspace. And if you have not heard of a makerspace, it was really, it really came about in public library settings as a way to make libraries relevant again. Well, Lynn already talked about Code App and how they're out of business because of your cell phones and how to take pictures, but we all know the fate of borders and in our own community basements right now, there's just no stores and some libraries seem to be going in that same direction. So as a way to make our libraries relevant again, we're talking about makerspaces. And makerspaces are a place that kids can go where we're going to get that engagement and we're going to stimulate their curiosity. We want them to explore with different things. You know, back when we were doing AYP and No Child Left Behind and those high-stakes tests, we were asking kids to do things like describe, memorize, define, list, identify, pretty low-level thinking. But with a makerspace, we're asking kids to create, design, invent, plan, construct, engineer by giving them the tools that they can do those things with in our makerspace. I know I've got, one of my teachers has been hitting it hard and heavy and her science kids are loving her for it, they really are. They're so excited about being able to create things in science and to explore things in science. And so some schools are using their libraries as makerspaces and some schools have empty spaces that they're turning into makerspaces and some schools just have teachers doing some makerspace activities in their classroom to get to that higher-level thinking.
Because it's all about that engagement, experimentation, and taking their learning and shaping it to something that is relevant to them and also being able to do something and even learning that it's okay to make mistakes. If they make something in makerspace and it falls apart, that's a success if they learn how to make it not fall apart the next time. And that's much a better way for us to have the kids understand the way the world works instead of, you know, oh, you got it wrong, well, you're not good. Oh, you got it wrong, great, let's make it better.
One thing I wanted to share is that we at Charles Stones have a plan to share and help our colleagues because not everyone was able to go. So we have a plan that every month during a staff meeting, we're going to share some of these ideas about Quad D and how to get your students involved and how to get your instruction to that engaged mode after school, professional development before school. And then we spent a big block of our time at our back-to-school in-service at our building sharing the ideas and the concepts that we learned in Orlando and are bringing back for them.
One more picture, so makerspaces, kids experimenting and coming up with their ideas and iterating on them. Genius Hour where the kids are given a task and they have to figure out how they're going to achieve that task. Oh, yes, sorry. Okay, so one of the things that will let us, let the kids be engaged and explore in and using technology is a thing called Google Cardboard. And you can see, we have a few different versions of it. And so different ones of these are going to have different programs going. Okay, and they will track your movements. And we'll get a couple more over here. Yep. Oh, that's pretty cool. And so it allows the students to explore. If you're talking about space, then you can take them on a space adventure where they're actually seeing the planets or walking on the moon. If you're talking about the ocean's ecosystems, you can actually have them wander around in the ocean and see different fish and things like that. Or if you're talking about erosion, then you can have them watching people who flip jumping of those things. Yeah, that has a problem with, you have to put them in the sides, yeah. So all of these are built, right? Yeah, well, there's literally a thousand, like a thousand different apps actually can do with this. And really, probably the most interesting thing is that Google actually has a thing called Expeditions. And you can have a tablet which connects with all the phone, so you can have a setup of twenty of these. And Google Expeditions, the app that is on the tablet, will actually direct what the kids are seeing, but whenever the kids are holding it up, you can place them wherever you want them to be, but then they can look in three dimensions. So if you're talking about a specific place in the world, they can actually view it as if they were there or seen through history or whatever.
Okay, so professional development is always a challenge in many different ways. Katie mentioned, one of the ways that she built or got funding for her flexible seating was by using social media. And so one of the ideas that we're kind of rolling out to staff at the high school, and this was really aided by our national speaker who came in to do our district-wide, yeah, professional development at the beginning of the year, Dr. Eric Scheniger. But basically, it's using social media as a resource for you as a professional and also for your students and not something to be feared that they're doing, okay? We've heard from so many speakers throughout the week that are engaged on Twitter and Facebook, Pinterest, and they use this as a constant source of professional knowledge and growth. And so that's one of the things we're kind of rolling out to our staff at the high school is getting engaged with this stuff. It really is as simple as creating an account for some of them and then going in their field and just following a few people. And then once you start learning from those people by what they post on Twitter, okay, using the hashtags and searching out certain subjects, it's just the limits, there are no limits. And so it really, it's not fearing this anymore. And then hopefully at the high school, we are hoping that we can turn this over to students, especially as they progress through their high school career and they start building their own professional learning network based on their career interests and whatnot. So it's something we are committed to, we're kind of taking baby steps at the high school because we don't want to overwhelm them. But it is, like I said, we can't fear it anymore, it's their language, the students' language, and it's a great resource for us as professionals as well.
So here's some of the hashtags that we've been using. The high school uses the GC Buff Pride. We've been using BeBowl457 and C K Scheniger whenever he was here. And these allow us to look at the conversation that's happening and allow us to have professional conversation. It's also a way for us to reach out to the community. We can put a, what was it called, a storyteller-in-chief, right? We can be storyteller-in-chief of the story that we're telling the community by showing the community all the exciting things that are happening, where we're inviting them. When you watch a TV show today, there's always the hashtags that they want you to be using so you can be following that conversation and engaging. Well, that's what we want as well as a district is to be saying, here's the amazing things we're doing, here's how exciting education is in this city, and let's all be part of it. So BeBowl457.
So they asked me to close and give that. Heath and I got to be the central office folks that went. And when we got back, of course, the enthusiasm abounds after a model school conference because they're giving you ideas, but with rationale and reasoning that makes such perfect sense. But then to get all of that information back to the district is a challenge. And we met as a group that said, when we return, kind of to plan for district in-service and to develop some pod conversations for the back-to-school in-service. And Melinda Stewart, she kind of raised her hand and said, are we really going to get to do this? Like, in the past, we get all this enthusiasm and this excitement and then are we going to get in trouble if we try these things, if we're innovative? And we're here to reassure that you can be innovative in this district. We have set the stage of trust between central office, teachers, staff, and students to allow innovation. And it's okay to fail when you're innovative as a teacher. And we just ask that you don't keep failing. We want you to try something new if what you're trying doesn't work. But we're very excited about what this group came back with. We've started a rotation, hopefully, to continue to send schools so they're represented equally throughout the district. We want to empower teachers, we want to empower students, and central office wants to be the empowering force behind that.
So even though our mascot are cougars, we're cats, we all took the challenge to be a little more dog, didn't we? So we want you all to step out and be a little more dog.
Hopefully this works. It didn't work. Okay, this one I put.
We could easily search.
All right. I used to be a cat. Every day the same. Bored between nine and ten, then aloof till lunch, then coldly indifferent. To me, everything was just, eh, and then it hit me. Why be so cat? Why not be a bit more dog? I mean, look at the world today, it's amazing. Carpe diem. It means grab the frisbee. Maybe we should all be a bit more dog.
So thanks for giving us the opportunity, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to step out and be a little more dog. And this is going to be an awesome ride, isn't it? Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? This should be before all the people.
Yeah, before we leave.
No questions, you.
I do have a question. I love all the hashtags and like how to figure out, how to get more information. How are you guys going to do that? Like, for example, Laura, I saw her posting on Facebook about her kids in robotics camp. I'm like, how did you get that information? I did not know that existed. And she's like, get on their Facebook page, you know? And I think that there's a lot of parents that don't have kids in high school or may not have kids, you know, they may not be connected to your school or may not, but they may have that bounce of all that you want or something. Like, how are you going to do that so that way it's community, you know, so to reach out to the whole community, not just the students in your class and their parents or even in your building, you know? Because these are fun, like, I would love to.
We have Twitter and Facebook at our school, and so open channels or any event that we have, we have posters all around our building that have our address and how to reach us through that web address. And we also are, webpages are being redesigned, so within our school webpages, there'll be probably links to those sites as well.
Katie and I got all of our donated furniture from a community-based website, the G K, G C Trader, Better Trader and Trader, both of them. We got, that's how we went through, we went through a community website and just wrote that we were teachers looking for donations of anything you might have in your house that could use a little elbow grease.
Or garage sailing.
I'm like, oh.
There's your own page for teachers.
Well, when they roll out the new website, I know one thing we're going to be able to do is, I mean, the majority of people are on social media somewhere, someplace. So, you know, when we get our Skylark back and we can get a picture, we can make phone calls, send out the emails, we'll start introducing some of those items. Right now, I think we're in the stage where, I know, I just sat in on the librarian in-service at the beginning of the year, and they're starting a librarian Twitter, but they're going to, well, tonight after school, they did their training, so they could all learn how to use it, and then they'll start sharing their link. So that is a good point, and I think that's one thing that we've all talked about that we want to do is to get it out to parents, out to community. And so hopefully through our new website and then the use of Skylark, we can start making that known.
Sorry. It starts small, like, it starts with like one teacher, two teachers, the kids, and then your preschool's getting involved and then it just, it's going to snowball, it's just getting it out there and getting it started.
Just maybe having a list of those hashtags, because it doesn't matter where you are in the community, it doesn't matter where you are in America, you can hashtag GC Buff Pride and you can search that conversation and you can see everything that's being said.
Yeah. Like, you'll read a lot about calculators, I just looked at it. The teacher just talked about calculators.
Yeah, if you look closer at that one, we'd have, it was like, they were very impressed with their calculator. Yeah, something about learning how to use a calculator.
And I know if there's an event going on, then I'll go through and paste, because I belong to all of those websites for the community, that I'll go through and paste it on each one, like, it's the big cool free day. I'll put it on everyone down to the Garden City children's, and I'll tag even some of the community, different members or groups that I know of, I'll tag the people that I know and those, so they can reach it out and that will connect to them.
Yeah. If you do, you will get lots of notifications.
I was going to say, I think this maybe is a good conversation about personal learning networks, not only for our teachers, but maybe something that our community and our parents need to look into as well.
Well, some parents might not know how to use Twitter, they might be Twitter, I don't know, you know, some will call it Tweeter, things like that, but literacy night, math nights, we can start having a little mini how to use Twitter. I was never a real big fan at the start, but I started doing it over state football so I could see what's going on, and then the voice, I mean, I was going to get my vote in there. But now I'm linked up and so it's going to be awesome when we get it going.
And we could do in-services for the community, we do in-services for the teachers, we could do in-services for the community saying, here's how you get connected with us. And, you know, it could be a meeting of all the different participants.
I know for my class that I've started, they have a Twitter page and their own Facebook page, just so the parents, to teach them that, to teach them how to follow, like, and it's basically, you know, what is our goal and objective for the day, and I take a picture and post it, so we had our first posting of the day, they were very excited, but they don't know, and I'm trying to teach them responsible social media and also to reach out to their parents to say, like, here's our card, here's how you can reach us and how to do it, you don't have to, and here's every place where free Wi-Fi is in the community. So they have that access and they know where to go to. So we have to train the parents as well, we can do that through the kids, we'll train them, they go home, it's, hey, Mom, I tweeted today about our class, this is how I do it, let's go follow that.
That communication is, uh...
Other questions?
I think we also really did comments, though, to think about when parent-teacher conferences come up, because that's an opportunity to contact the parents, but it's also something that we're working with, but there's having school-specific programs that might benefit others who are not in that school. Sometimes the communication is a little bit difficult, so that's what it is.
And they're going to put all those, they're going to put school hashtags and Twitter accounts on each school, on the district page, on each school page, we have them.
I just wanted to say to you, I don't know if you mentioned it, but I appreciate the innovativeness of looking what is out there, because I know, as I said, it's donorstruits.org, and I know I've been out on that, and I don't know if they'll do it again this year, but I know during the Christmas season, the Bill and Melinda Gaines Foundation matched whatever was donated. So that is a great idea because it really lets you see what teachers are trying to do and stepping outside and, you know, trying, just, because I know you guys spend a lot of money out of your pockets, and I know there's a lot of people that probably want to connect with that too, but I just, I appreciate that and giving a shout-out to that website to people, because it is valuable and I think people appreciate, they want to help, they just don't know how, a lot of times.
And it's a tax write-off, probably, even when you're younger. It's a void for you guys.
I like that you're demonstrating that you're lifelong learners, because when your kiddos get to see you getting into an unfamiliar zone and learning how to do something that is in their wheelhouse, that goes a long way. They may not get that connection and connect those dots right then and there, but it'll hit somewhere down the road. So I think it's great that we're building that relationship according to their learning styles. And I also like what you said, Katie, that not all kiddos need that bouncing seat, some kids need more structure and to be sensitive to the fact that we can't fit every student into a particular mold. The fact that you guys are understanding and cheerleading that learning styles are different and that we need to be open to not only identifying but embracing and utilizing different learning styles and techniques is why we're well on our way to becoming a model district. So keep the enthusiasm. I know Renee Scott was so tired and excited when she got back from this conference, we had school board meeting that morning and she was a zombie, but she was talking about all these exciting things in this monotone voice, it was awesome. So keep that excitement and don't let it, don't let it play out, keep it going, keep each other motivated, it's awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you want to see the video of the evolution of the desk, that's what you can do.
I'd be the first one to fall off.
I would.
Not be a failure.
No, not be a failure. No, we're paid.
Looks like we're moving on to our SLP. Hi, going from that to something a little more serious but yet innovative at the same time. I'm here to discuss some issues we've encountered with the shortage of speech-language pathologists, but again, this isn't an issue that's any different in our district. There's still short physical therapists in our district, we're short teachers, but specifically tonight, I want to address the SLP problem. Last spring, we had a resignation of an SLP, had some health issues throughout the year, and when her physician came open, we were unable to fill that. And so it was kind of decided that we would utilize some parent support to help with that. Unfortunately, in July, we have another SLP resign. It was, it caused quite a problem because that took us from eight SLPs last school year down to six to start this school year. So that left six SLPs to service over five hundred students. We subscribe to an SLP database to try to get applicants, it costs $425 or $450 for thirty days. We had no applicants, but we contacted over twenty-five SLPs to try to get some bites. And then the thought of adding more parent support wasn't just going to solve the problem of a number of kids being serviced, so we decided to innovate. And this is what we're looking at.
I would say that my career in special education and in education in general has touched me personally in many ways, but it always comes down to the kids. It's always been about watching the students grow, seeing them make little successes in their lives. Presence learning we've had for two years in the district, it's really a very powerful speech-language lesson, but via the computer.
We had a hard time finding enough speech-language therapists in our community to provide services for all of our students. Going with presence learning, we have students being seen consistently and we're seeing bigger improvements.
I was a skeptic at first, how would we get a kid to, you know, learn language and speech articulation through a computer? It's been interesting to see the games that they can play on the computer and how the kids get excited about it. This is pretty powerful.
I see the one-on-one that my son gets. He has a hearing weakness in one of his years, and so he's actually able to hear the sound and then articulate it back. That surprises me with speech, I don't know that he always heard the sound that was being given to him last year and even at the beginning of this year. Last year and even at the beginning of this year, Connor wasn't able to be understood by some of his peers, and now he is. He's got a ton of friends now because they can understand what he's saying.
What I hope our students of special needs and any student I've ever worked with, what I would hope they all achieve in their life is just reach their potential, to maximize what they can offer to society. And I do believe that the work that we do through special education and through speech-language and presence learning is all helping us to achieve that.
Presence learning is what I'd like to try for the rest of this school year. I sent out some information to you last week talking a little bit about the shortage of speech pathologists. It is a Garden City, Kansas, issue, but it's not just a Garden City, Kansas, issue. It looks like there are roughly fifty-eight thousand SLPs working in K-12 schools. However, there's a shortage of five to seven thousand nationwide. Half of those are due to retire in the next decade, and so the demand is unreal. So I started to look, who's using this service? Garden County Co-op was just about to sign the contract and literally the day before, hired an SLP who fell in their lap, so that was extremely lucky. Ensign Special Education Co-op utilizes presence learning in a couple of their Dodge City schools, as well as some of their smaller schools in their co-op. And then Salina was the big one. Last year, they serviced a hundred and fifty students with presence learning. They're now over seven and a half SLPs short to start this school year. They're going to service three hundred and seventy-four students this coming school year through this service. Where I'd like to start with presence learning is that a caseload of between fifty and seventy, but a minimum of fifty students all year will be serviced. Currently, I was looking at some different grade levels, some different schools. I chose Bernadine Zins, Quinell Walker, Richard Walker, and Georgia Matthews. I wanted an intermediate center to look at some of the range of the fifth and sixth grade. The country schools I chose, because of the driving time of our SLPs, that allows them to service some students that they would miss out on the travel time between those schools. And so if we just went with six SLPs, and our current caseloads, we were looking at numbers of upward from ninety-nine to seventy. And even with para support, ninety-nine is a lot of students. If we add presence learning and can take fifty-seven off of their caseload, that knocks us down to about four hundred, four hundred and forty to four hundred and fifty. My numbers didn't quite match the SLPs when they redistributed their caseload, but that gave them anywhere from sixty-eight to seventy-nine students, again, with para support, to help service some of their students. I don't want to replace SLPs with online speech therapists. That's not the goal. Our goal would be to have a fully staffed, based on our current caseload, about eight SLPs. And I want to, I want to move towards that goal. My goal is to continue to recruit and hire. I don't know that we're tapping into some of our resources when we go on teacher recruiting trips. Now, in my head, I'm like, I want to hit up the schools that also produce SLPs. We also have a certified teacher in our district that's ready to start her CCC hours towards SLP. And so there's a possibility she can come on board next year. We have a speech para who's getting some experience in the classroom underneath her belt. She'll go back to school and hopefully in two or so years be ready to come and work for us. So we have some things in the pipeline. But also then we'll just continue to evaluate the effectiveness of presence learning, and if it remains a viable option and we have a shortage, at least it's something to take some stress off of our current SLP caseload. Questions about presence learning?
Are we gonna watch the data of students that are on this program versus an SLP group-based case?
Right. We'll continue. We monitor the data of all of our IEP students, because they need to be meeting their goals, so absolutely. I probably should point out that the presence learning SLP is their true case manager. They can assess the students, they run the IEP meetings, they become part of the team of that child. So it's not like every time a child logs in, they have a different SLP that they're working with. They have the same SLP all school year, just like our students with Dixie or Eileen or any of our other SLPs would have.
Do we pay based on the students that they're responsible for, or...?
Right. It's a billing of, it's an hourly billing. So it's, if they're working in groups of three, we're not billing per student. It's per time that they work with students. It's indirect and direct billing. So just like our SLPs, if they're preparing for an IEP or writing up the assessment results, we pay for that, but it is, they expect no more than thirty percent of their billing would be indirect. And it's monthly, so I can really keep tabs on what that looks like.
How did you come up with the number of students you wanted us to learn?
Yeah. So I was looking at kind of what I wanted to spend the first year, but with indirect billing, I'm not sure. So, but I also want to take a burden off of our SLPs. So I said I want to start with a minimum of fifty. It's easier to increase with presence learning than design a contract for seventy students, and we don't necessarily need those services. So I'm starting at the low end with the ability to go higher.
I've got another one. I'm on a roll.
You can keep going.
Our current SLPs on staff, how do they feel about this?
So I met with them last week to roll it out, and I got support through email that they were all supportive of trying this. I mean, ninety-nine versus seventy students, I can take the load off of them. It's not perfect.
I want them to feel like we're taking a load off, but we're not trying to replace them.
Yeah.
And so I want to make sure they don't feel that way.
And I made that very clear. I really stressed that, that my goal is to recruit, retain, hire SLPs. But right, we have nobody, so, yes.
Renee, I'm sorry. I...
No, I am done.
I may, I was writing something down, so I'm not sure if you already said that. How did you choose those students? Are there certain types of students that are more successful?
No, they can service anyone. In some districts, presence learning is the only choice. So they would service anyone from the itty-bitty's to the high school age, from minor speech impairments to severe balance ability. So they have the ability to service anyone. I'm starting small, and I'm experimenting. So I tried to choose a variety of buildings, some, some... Oh, for example, presence learning has the ability to assess in multiple languages. And sometimes we are faced in our district with not knowing if it's truly a speech impairment or a language issue. We don't have that ability. So I tried to choose some schools that we could maybe utilize for language assessments and that. But really, I tried to choose schools that could add up somewhere between fifty and seventy students.
Then I have one more question, too, because I kind of did some research online, too.
Yes.
Is that somebody typically monitors the students, so how is that gonna work?
Yeah, so I met with principals, and we kind of went and stormed to that. In some cases, we have paras on staff that set them up. When they say monitor, they don't need someone right there with the students, making sure the student is logged in, and then if there's an instance where the technology quits working, they need to have line-of-sight communication. So the student needs to be able to find someone to see what's going on. So it's not monitoring the student in terms of behavior or on task, because this company swears that's not an issue, that the kids are engaged. It's more monitoring to make sure that the students can get in and get out.
You know, now I think that's key. First of all, congratulations for my game.
Because I think I'm not sleeping, to be quite honest.
And so this is, this is not new, and it is somewhat tried, and so there's a lot to be excited about. And just, I think, taking the pressure off of yourself. And I'm wondering, though, you know, part of their caseload, they have workloads. Part of their workload is the scheduling of these events.
Right.
And then finding the child, pulling them out at the right time, and getting them in front of the TV. Then there should be somebody that's always there doing that. I think it's great that it's a line-of-sight thing and not sitting right next to the child, because obviously you want the SLP to be able to do their thing without interruption. But there's still a logistics.
Right, so this company actually employs a scheduling company that schedules on the major airlines. And we send them times of days, times in the school day for every one of these buildings that our students absolutely cannot be pulled from services. So if you don't want to pull them from their pace or their math block or something, that's out of the question. And they do it. It is gonna take great work. I'm already getting bell schedules, grade schedules from all the buildings to see what that entails. But the upfront work is not gonna be easy, but once it gets going, it should be. But, you know, with any kind of services you provide, it's ever-changing. We'll have students added to services, and that's with any of our SLPs and presence learning, and we'll have students dismissed. So that's just an ever-changing goal in special education anyway.
But you're right, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of crowdfunding.
It's great that it's an option.
Yeah.
It could help to, and I think it's important.
I see that we have a couple of SLPs here.
Yeah.
Can we...
Absolutely.
Stay up here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Wherever you're from.
You want to introduce yourselves?
Stand on my chair. I'm pretty short. I'm Dixie Teeter, and I am actually a nineteen-year graduate from the state high school. And I'm back, and I'm super excited to be here. And I'll just give you a little bit of my history. I've been in several districts. I've been, worked for Salina, I've worked for Haze High, I've worked for Goodland. I've been in Salt Lake Craft, been cleared out by Keenan, been a traveling therapist everywhere. And when my friends and colleagues from across the states and I was coming back to be a speech pathologist here, they asked me what I was doing. And not, it's just because we know the high caseloads here. I mean, we're targeted for high caseloads down in this area, not just Garden City, but Dodge City as well. And, you know, Hubert and the Ulysses Co-op, and they're all targeted for high caseloads and driving time. So, you know, I knew what I was getting into, and I'm glad I'm here. And I'm extremely excited that she's looking into the option for us, because I do, the thought that it took fifty-six kids away from us having to, you know, even drive to those schools and schedule and make sure we're doing that. And I think it's critical that kids' services are being provided. And that was the biggest part for me, is I'm not getting the kids seem like they need to be to make sure that we're doing our jobs, and so, or they feel like I'm doing what I need to do. So I appreciate the fact that we're trying it, and like she said, it's a total trial error. I mean, we have some friends who've done it before up in Goodland that served in the western part of Colorado and had nothing negative to say about it. My biggest concern was, am I gonna have a job when you find ten of the people like that? And are they cheaper than me? And, you know, that's not what it's about, honestly. And she very much told us that at our meeting, that, you know, it's not to replace you at all. It's to provide that support. And I'm excited the fact that we'll still keep that position open, and we'll still try to find that person for the camaraderie, because it does help our team. And excited that we have six here that's willing to stick it up for this year, so.
Dixie, you want to share about Fort Hays?
Yeah, I just got, when she brought it up the day, she brought it up in, I got a magazine from my alma mater from where I graduated from, and I also was a professor there for two years. They are actually doing training at the campus to provide teletherapy to Western candidates. And I want to say it might be liberal that they're partnering with. And so their professors are teaching students how to actually do the therapy through, through online. So it's innovative, and I thought Fort Hays was probably right on target about if we want to provide jobs for SLPs, especially in remote areas that you have to travel a lot. It's probably a good thought. Renee had pulled me in to kind of check and kind of do the thinking cap from an SLP perspective. And really, honestly, any question that I had, they answered it right on. And I thought, they're, they're able to do this, they can do my job to the level that I'm doing the job, really. It's just through the computers and whatnot. You could, I was a little skeptical of, can a child really see what's going on in my mouth when I'm modeling for them? And they have the technology that they use, you can see, I can imagine they can really hear really well. The students are engaged. I think sometimes we think maybe they won't be, but how can a student sit there on their own or invisible with a line of sight? But they, anybody that I have talked to, they've said that the students actually can be a little bit more engaged. And just the presentation earlier about how our children are learning different than the way we probably traditionally were. I think this program kind of falls into place with that. Another opportunity that Renee didn't mention that I'm excited about personally myself, she had mentioned that the Presence Learning Company also provides professional development opportunities that maybe your local SLPs, they call us on-the-ground SLPs. Yeah, I kind of like that. We're in the ground. And they're supporting us. They, I mean, we could collaborate with them as well, and that opens up more networking that we aren't familiar with yet, so I'm excited about that. And I'm just really, I am looking forward to learning as well and working with that. I'm also looking forward to other special team members learning more from other SLPs, too. I think we can just add more professionals to the team that can help as well. They had mentioned, I was concerned about licensing, you know, and how, are they watching their SLPs? Are they maintaining their credentials and that sort of thing? Their answers were that, yes, we watch them, they got their campus license. It's not just anybody that is on the other end providing those services for our students, so.
We'll keep your feedback coming.
We will.
Because you're in the trenches.
Yeah.
We're here.
How it's going?
Lots of talking. We've talked about how we have to, we're gonna need continually and talk about how this is going and working through that, how we're probably gonna do that, so.
Wasn't it about a year ago, someone from your department, or did you came and talk to us about, hey, we're grounded here? And so I think we make some good headways and help these guys out, so we do appreciate that.
Yeah, and we appreciate what you do, obviously.
I think we're excited, too, that maybe it can help keep it more steady. I think there's been so many changes year after year after year with SLPs coming and going. I'm in my second year, so I haven't experienced that except for the last couple of years. But I think that'll help, too, with retaining, if it can just be more of us through not so many changes throughout the year. I mean, you expect changes at the beginning, and you do expect your changes with exiting and adding students, but it's like whole building changes that just, you're trying to relearn a student in as quick, as time as you can to get their needs met, and that can be frustrating. So maybe that will also help with this, too, that we can just be more consistent and really get to get after what the child needs.
I'm glad you touched on that, because that's a huge focus for us. With teacher shortage, the first thing we need to do is take care of the people we have.
A little bit of that, and so thank you for bringing that up. It's totally, I personally feel that Renee is really helping us in that she's communicating with you guys, communicating with us, trying to help resolve that as well. And we've told her a lot. We appreciate all of the research and everything that she's put into this, and we're excited to move forward, so.
Would you say that's a genaphones, some small, you know, those feelings that you both share?
Yeah, I think, I think so. I mean, anytime you can reduce your work, your caseload a little bit, to, you know, hope you'll do your job better, I think everybody's on board with that. I mean, they're all, we're all, you know, it's something we've never all experienced before. So again, there's, what's it gonna look like? How's it happen? How does it, how's our buildings? There's always these speech pathologists who love a certain building, too, and they've developed relationships with teachers, and so it's kind of hard to give those up sometimes, because you think we can do it all. But at the same time, they're excited what big community work is in our services.
Hey, can I ask you, what is the ideal caseload?
Yeah.
Well, here's the deal with caseload. Everybody asks me, what's the ideal number? And I can, honestly, the state of Kansas says forty-five to fifty-five. Now, you know, that's probably very not a reality. But I am also a part of the autism group for the state of Kansas, and I work as a consultant, so I go to a lot of... So I go to a lot of different places and I do get to see a lot of people. And their case loads are low and it's crazy. I mean, we're thirty, forty, forty-five, fifty. And again, you can't just base it off numbers because you have to base it off the severity of the child, how many times a week they're seen. I mean, some kids are seen one time a week, some kids are seen consuls, some kids are three times a week. Some kids are, you know, I bet you forty percent of my case load are significant needs kids, autism specifically, or TBI, Down Syndrome. And preschool alone is way different than high school therapy. So you know, Renee has a challenge ahead of her to decide what is a true case load because of our workload is different from just the number. You know, at the preschool level, we do evaluation, you see a kid almost three times per meetings. You know, you have a pre-meeting, assessment, evaluation, night meeting. So it's not just their fee, it's a lot of time involved. So again, it just depends on what level, how many kids, what their numbers are, I mean, so it varies. But the state does say, I think, forty-five to fifty-five. Is that the number that got sent out? There's a letter from the Kent State High Squad, or High Squad Coach too, so I say High Squad, but CASHA, Kansas Speech and Language Association, does have an advocate letter for our speech pathologists for our profession across the state of Kansas. And there is a number and I'm pretty sure it was fifty, fifty-five-ish. But again, it's all relevant to workload too. We have to.
Thank you. Question?
I'd just, first thankler, I'm even Dixon for being here tonight, for all the work in the district. And I'm sure you can reiterate Scott's comment. Our goal here isn't to replace any SLPs. We want to have real live SLPs in front of our kids, as mentioned. But here's a little background information. In the two thousand nine, two thousand ten school year and all the way back to two thousand six, and I know it went further back than that, but I don't have that in front of me. We had seven SLP positions in the district, we had three SLPs new jobs. So this isn't new by any stretch of the imagination. As a matter of fact, with six out of eight, we're a lot better than what we were, even in two thousand, the two thousand nine, ten school year, but it's still good enough. So the solution that we have here, I think in front of me tonight, is something that hopefully can help us improve that. But as Ms. Scott said, we've got, we're in a better position right now. Because I'm telling you, two thousand nine, we didn't have a pipeline where we had any possibilities. And so to be in a spot where we've actually got two potential people that may be able to fill those seven to eight spots for us as we move forward, I'm extremely optimistic about that and we're in a better spot. So I don't want anybody to think that this is an effort to replace. We would rather have real life people, those are going to be the best ways to deliver services. We want to be sensitive to the case loads and the workloads. But also, as Dixie said, this is, this is a Southwest Kansas thing and this is a national thing, you know. There are five to eleven thousand SLPs short. And so I feel really good about the progress that the district has made since two thousand nine. And again, we got a couple of ways to go, we're not where we want to be. When I, when I started in the HR office in two thousand ten or eleven, remember that, but I'm telling you, the people that showed me those jobs said, you might as well glue those magnets to your board that we used to keep track of our vacancies because we try and try and try and we just can't fill them. So you know, don't let that bother you. Well, we had pre-fill. Last year we had eight, had eight for a while. That was pretty amazing and we can get back there again. But I just want the board to know that this is something that's important. And this is, it's great to see this kind of innovative solution because we do need to take the pressure off. These folks have worked hard, they continue to work hard, even with this solution, they'll continue to work hard. But it results in better services to our kids. So we're asking you tonight to do something a little unusual. We're asking you to approve this concept without waiting until our next meeting, bring it back, because we want to get moving on this. The next step will be to finalize an agreement and start getting some of the meetings set up to arrange the services for the students. But we're, I think we may have shared with you in writing that the cost of this is about equivalent, we estimate serving fifteen, seventy kids to what our cost for employing an additional SLP would be. And Renee will track that cost. But if the board approves this tonight, we'll have a written agreement that'll be on the consent agenda at the next meeting after Randy's reviewed it. But we didn't have time to get all the details put together with the company and have that organized. So if it's the board's pleasure, we would like to see you approve moving forward with this for this school year.
I remember that we heard it. If we didn't have a speech language department here today to support this, I would not want to do this today. But based on what they're saying, I feel comfortable with us moving forward. I'd like to start with a initial, very discussion. All those in favor of this discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, for. Is the trend, like, do students are hiring SLPs increasing or? I'm just wondering if that's a trend, like every year the number of students that use service increases. Do you know what the percentage of the increase is?
No, I don't, but I'm sure, and I can look it up. I just know in my realm of preschool alone, part of it is our kids aren't being taught to like we used to. There's so much more going on and so we're seeing, we are definitely seeing increases, especially in the preschool level as far as kids not developing speech to mind as like they should. And so that tends to be a deal. And of course, we just think about even the rate of autism, how much it's increased in the last, you know, in those kids, their biggest concern is communication. And so not only do our kids, we're seeing more severity in kids, we're seeing more kids, we're also meeting more demands of all the new technology that's out there to help our kids that are non-verbal or kids that, all of that now is added, you know, to our workload as far as learning this technology that we can to support our children. So yeah, it's definitely increasing. I probably could find those materials through, I'm sure it's in the act of our American Research Committee, so she should probably test that as far as the rate of increase. But in every district I think I've been in, every director talks about increase in speech levels.
Build that special little childhood center and you know, if you build it, they'll come.
It's standing line out the door.
I'm happy.
And our enrollment's a little higher, so even if, even if the worst increase is, which I think we probably are, just overall percentage wise, we're going to have a little increase because we're serving more kids six or seven years later now than we did in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So are there more kids that need services actually that would compare the services?
Just seems like it's a communication that we're going to need less. I've always read about it, but I just wondered from your perspective. Moving on to the revision policy of G A.
Yes ma'am, so I'm going to cover the changes. So this policy deals with emergency safety interventions. This policy's been very fluid. This will be a more revision in four years. This is the policy that's directed by the state. So you have a copy of the policy and the changes, but just to summarize, we have been following the recommendation of K S B of their policy language. And we'll be doing the same tonight. This is a first reading and so we'll ask the board to make an action to our next meeting. Some of the changes are, they have inserted some language under the definitions, just give a clarification to some of those things. But the biggest change there is they've added language for campus police or our resource officers that we have in our school system. There's also been some language change in terms of training and what the responsibility is for the district and documenting that training. We have to be able to not only train our folks in doing that, but also keeping that on record so that we're ever on to, we can prove that that's been done. Notification and documentation, again, just clearing up what the process looks like. We have events, they worked out an incident for ESI being implemented. But you know, the process we go through to notify our parents of that incident. There's very specific things that need to be recorded during that time. So the updates really spell that out in terms of what needs to be included in the communication. Another big change is giving parents an opportunity to set up a meeting and provide feedback about the incident itself and maybe do some problem solving in order to avoid future incidents. There's again another full section in terms of law enforcement, school resource, campus security officers. Their exempt to some of these restrictions, if you will, based on their fees as law enforcement officers and their training they receive. There's a section that's new for us that gives a little more explanation in terms of how to deal with students that are on a final year plan. And then what needs to be happened in terms of evaluation of those particular students and working in terms of maybe if they're going to go back into the special education qualification. So that's kind of a broad summary and a lot of changes in the policy.
Question?
So tonight, this is a first reading, so we'll do it two more times and then one more time and then we'll vote to pass it, correct?
Sort of be on the consent agenda the next time that there's no questions.
And then that will take effect this school year?
Correct.
So I guess my round and bath question is, how are we going to update the handbooks for the parents in the community to know that this new policy has changed?
So any information that we have is available. We'll have to update our webpage with some of the forms and the information that is in the policy in terms of that communication. What needs to be done, any changes to the handbook we need to enter in our handbooks too.
We, we had to do this last year, I think, too. We did like, the problem is, the legislature is changing this law every year. And so the law, even when they pass the law, it's not really written as final language until the state updates everything. And all that's happening in the interim, so it's not timing up well with when we update our handbooks, but.
So we just sent on the paper then?
Correct.
We tweet about it.
Yeah, we can tweet it too. But we'll, but we'll use like.
Not on the link.
But we'll use like Skylark to.
Well, I wonder how, because I read that in the, so you know, I wonder how you let everyone else know that you changed the policy. That if you were reading the changes, you know, it's a little bit, when the parents need to know. I don't want kids to get caught in the situation and then, you know, don't, that's not my end of the game. But if we stand alone then.
And if we have anybody that begins to work their way through the process, we'll make sure that they have the current policy in place.
That was my question.
And a very clear expectation of communication, what happens after maybe you have an incident that requires ESI, so there's a process in the communication process.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? At this point, we're going to clear our discussion.
Yeah, on negotiations, I'm a little surprised we haven't seen something. I've been waiting for tonight to be a bit hot, but in, in teacher negotiations, we have a tentative agreement. And I'm hoping there's going to be a vote tomorrow, a meeting tomorrow, vote and then.
It's getting to five o'clock, high school.
Five, five, seven o'clock.
Mark and I will be there as well as everybody that's on that.
The other members of the negotiation team. Yeah, I, I thought it went very well. We had education upfront from the federal media, at times it was sort of meaningful, fairly slow. And yet, it was, I think it served to get everybody on the same page. And so by the time KJ couldn't take it anymore and made a presentation, no, that's one. By the time she was ready to make a presentation of some information, it was all proceeding very well. And it was constructive, it was positive, and we ended up wrapping up with a tentative agreement to project to the teachers for a world really quick. So I thought that was all quite successful. And having gone through last year, that process, it was an expedited process this year. Just wonderful set of teachers toward that.
I agree. I think we might as well record in two days to get through the process.
You know, we had some good, learned a lot, so we'll see what the teachers think about the proposal and the information we need.
Appreciate you.
I'll give you a high five. Your high five, awesome.
You rolled.
You did rock. Did anyone else say anything?
Do you have a question? I just have one to take to the floor, Steve, there. You know, we still are at quite the challenge that HR and others in our leadership is facing in getting teachers into the classrooms. And for the size of the classrooms that we have, so I think there's going to be a lot of high fives and add-ons if necessary. And I'm glad to hear this cultural push of positive support because I think teachers need it. And students are going to benefit if I'm going to keep that going. But I still want us to be sensitive to class size. And you know, sometimes there's no easy solution. But I think we've had great leadership working on the question. And as a board, I think we need to continue to be sensitive to the workloads that the teachers face and to get what they need to respond, so. And I think we all know that, that is just something we've got to stay on top of. It's quite a challenge this year. August thirty-first, in Topeka, there is USA United School Institute, K S B are hosting a conversation about a future school funding formula. You know, we're all aware the legislature's going to have to do something in this area. There was some work that was done last year kind of by a committee. And I think they're going to share some of that, get more feedback, use that as kind of an opportunity to wrap up kind of the thoughts that we're at KJ and are planning on attending. But if there's any board members who would be interested, certainly you're invited. I know there are districts that have board members attending. This is what will require a trip to Topeka. But if you're interested, please let me know and we can help you with the rankings if registered. Also.
What day is that?
A Wednesday, I believe. It's a week from, a week from this Wednesday. This Wednesday will be the twenty-fourth of May, Paul, Wednesday.
Is it September or?
Obviously.
August, August.
So short notice, sorry, short notice. And then just a heads up, I think Vann is going to rehearse in high school, March eighth is their booster club is interested. As they always, I mean, they're great fundraisers, I know they do a lot of concession stands. But I think they're planning a significant raffle, they're looking at raffling off automobile. And so there's going to be a big push, I think, here in the next sixty days probably with Vann boosters selling $1 raffle tickets for an automobile, so.
Are we all in?
I believe so. I think it'll be all the people they told us in the part where those that were directly involved with the booster club and the raffle itself. So, you know, just. So, you know, just, our band is about two hundred kids. And we're excited to see how they, how they do this year. This originally started as a conversation about uniforms. And we have a set up budget that, they're up for a uniform replacement. But if they want the super deluxe uniforms that the booster club may raise some additional funds to upgrade them a little bit. If they want more uniforms, then I want the district, you know, for the uniform, then the booster club may want to pay the difference. And if they don't use it for uniforms, tonight you have an expenditure for instruments, band instruments aren't cheap. And so this particular one was a great little rant, I think, for Mr. Sova, Diane, but I, the money certainly will do good cause, like they have district reasons, so. Be ready to see those things start to occur.
While I don't want to discourage anyone from donating, I already have the winning ticket.
Good luck with that. What'd you get to find out on the camp football game? Did you ever do that?
Uh, well, I think we don't have any hiccups from the city side. It's just gonna be a matter of whether the group, it was a group of Army reservists, whether or not they can pull that off. As far as ordinances or permits or anything there, that's all something that we can do. And is that a firearm? It, it probably technically qualifies as that. But there's discussion about whether they'll put that at the north, if we get this done, whether we put it at the north end of the field or whether we put it across the highway on private property too. So there's a couple of different options there. But the first concern was, how will the city feel about that? But there's been a group that's approached the high school athletic department about firing a blank round from a cannon when a football team scores or. And apparently they were gonna do the same thing, the conversation I think originally started with college. And they thought they were gonna extend that offer to us as well. The suggestion was made that I initiated the first shot. I'm not sure if I'm a cannon shooter or not, so. Or if the, or if the gentlemen or ladies that are running the cannon would do that, so we'll see.
We could shoot you out of there.
Ooh, that's scary. I think it's. Yeah, lots of volunteers moving in, so.
I want to invite everyone to the community fiesta in Saturday, basic Campbell County. Saturday, the ninetieth year of the celebration. So the rate of the morning, if they get into the forum, invite somebody, you can go down there. Need a couple of brothers, a couple of daughters, maybe a brother or a sister.
Sorry, the camp.
What is the government camp?
Along the lines of the school formula, I'm on the government affairs committee for the Chamber of Commerce. And we're gonna be starting to work on our legislative agenda. So while it's obviously a different perspective than what we have here, if you have any thoughts, I, for some reason, they put me on the education section. So if you have any thoughts that I could contribute to that, please let me know. And I'll see how it frameworks within the business viewpoint too. So a lot of times we're, we should be working hand to hand on that, so.
I did want to mention that in hearing all the things that were brought up, this year, we did a thank you battle. And our prior videos have compared the technology is really getting more and more ready in every area of what we do. And I think we're really gonna have to be still a lot more strongly when we start doing coaching in the future. Because we're just relying on, of course, so much, and it's really hurting our students. But there is a cost to that, you know, really, really working that hard. Because these things like ESI, we're dealing with a lot of expectations for certain future generations of students. So it's just, we tend to, you know, there's more and more technology that's involved. I'd really like to do this for them.
I'm glad we both don't have a finger on the tree, and we all can talk that through. And it was, was that our number one issue as a group? That's, that's really promising that we're all, we've got our finger on the pulse of what's going on throughout the district, so, wow.
I would say it was something, like I, it's my job now, I travel, and we use a school district. And some of the smaller communities around have the bouncy ball and the wiggling chair, you know, she's kind of like listening. I said, where's the chairs at? So, but then we got to talk about that tonight, you know, it's, you know, we might be a little beyond age law. A lot of the small schools, Blad, Arden, Colby, Goodland, you know, they're all ready to do now.
There is a teacher currently on development, she wants to get those bike placations.
Yeah, and that's another thing they have, is the pedals, so, yeah.
Making out. Next board meeting will take place on Monday, September twelve. Please receive your seat and your list of names. Is there a Russian teacher? I still have any, okay, in the special, on base of all locations.